Good evening, I'm Bernard Granger, Brookline Select Board, and this is the a regular meeting of the Select Board Target Town Meeting for May 27, 2025. Any announcements in the Select Board? For our things? Nope, same none. Listened to all the comments.
Sorry, can you move one second? I forgot to pull that up. Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you'd like. Once fifteen minutes has been met, there's an opportunity at the conclusion of the Select Board's business for additional comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and respond over email. The on-screen timer will flash orange when you have thirty seconds remaining and red when your time is nearly up. Please conclude your remarks at that time. If you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. Any person wishing to speak must begin their comment by identifying themselves with their full name and either their Brookline precinct number or street address. We do not have any individuals who signed up in advance to speak for public comment. If there's anyone online who wishes to speak during public comment at this time, please raise your hand using the raise the hand feature. There are seven individuals online, and it looks like no one is indicating they're disheartened to speak.
Great. Vote for public comment. Yes, I said, I ready, I thought there might be a question of public comment, but I wanted to just briefly highlight what we emailed out this afternoon to town meeting members and also publish it online. Recently, a decision was made to update the staffing model of the Brookline Fire Department. It's a move to a flexible staffing policy that involves ensuring that there's still the appropriate number of firefighters on hand to respond to working fires and other events, but it allows more flexibility in terms of how those responses are staffed, how stations are staffed. There is additional details available online at BrooklineMA.gov/FireStaffing. It's F-I-R-E-S-T-A-F-F-I-R-G. We've sent out a press release that's available online, and also you can visit that website for additional information. You know, for example, this evening, members of the fire union are present outside of town meetings. They're giving their own response to this decision, which is absolutely their right, and we continue to look forward to working with them as representatives of our firefighters who move forward in this process. So I just do one flag for anyone watching. If you were looking for more information about that decision, which will go into effect on July 1st, please visit BrooklineMA.gov/FireStaffing.
Thank you. Okay, first, minutes for May 20th, 2025. Any corrections or additions to those minutes? Nope. I move approval of the minutes for May 20th, 2010. By law, favor. John Vascoya.
Hi.
Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Thorman.
Hi.
Michael Rubenstein.
Hi.
And Chair Bullseye. Okay, I'd like to move in honor of this fashion items 3B through 3G, which includes, if I recall, a couple items, one item that was addressed by the hearing committee the other day. Any questions or anyone want to pull one of these off for further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we should remove the Sewell courtyard renovation. The recreation director asked that we pull that for consideration at a later meeting. So that's item 3F.
Okay, this.
And just like temporary licenses and one-day licenses are handled directly by the Select Board, so this is not.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so items 3B through 3F.
3B two.
Yeah, take out 3F.
3B through 3G. Except for you.
Okay, then we take it out 3F.
Yeah.
Okay, so chief, now we got. Okay, so I will approval of all the remaining items under miscellaneous law in favor. Then people say hi, gentlemen, square.
Hi.
Let's see, Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Thorman.
Hi.
Michael Rubenstein.
Hi.
And Chair Bullseye. Article reviews, okay. The first item, or first one, article 30. Petitioner asked that we take it off agenda and deal with it at a later meet, so. That is the form of government that we want. For something.
Well, the day, we're not a day, we'll we'll leave it to them. It's not too much, but let's.
I'm not sure.
So the petitioner did file a motion for referral. So that is currently what we have is two different. Right now, you had voted the resolution in the form that it was filed, so now there's a referral.
I talked to Warren, so. Party? Yeah. I'm not sure what, I think there's, there's still.
Did he file a motion?
Just ask to take it off.
It was filed.
Yeah, there is a motion filed, but I'm guessing the petitioner asked that you defer consideration because it's not going to come up tonight, probably not tomorrow. So they're, they're asking that you give them a second to look on the file and show.
Okay, next is reconsideration of Article 18 and 19.
So eighteen, at the time that you had taken your vote, you did not have the advisory committee language. And so now the advisory committee language can be found in the fine reports, page eighteen dash twelve through eighteen dash seventeen. I think kind of the primary changes are around the effective dates and a couple of descriptors errors that the advisory committee also.
Any questions? Yeah, I'd like to move reconsideration of article eighteen to incorporate or to acknowledge the minor amendments from the guidance. If you have a favor, please let me say hi, John Vascoya.
Hi.
Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Thorman.
Hi.
Michael Rubenstein.
So I didn't vote on the previous.
Okay.
I don't understand consideration. I'm staying.
Okay, Chair Bullseye. Okay. Anyone want any further discussion of the changes?
Just an effective date.
So, so back to the advisory committee report. So there's language in section eight point three, two point six. Yeah, so that talks about the effective dates and when, when it will actually be enforced. Most of the effective dates, which are explicitly stipulated in section three, eight point three, two point two, AC, AB, and E, and more generally in third eight point three, two point six, effectively, were not modified by the amended bylaw. These dates occurred in 2019 and 2020, and yet it's provisioned and includes language in the warrant article, which is the version of the bylaw. So that's what they were correcting with the effective dates. The descriptive error was identified in the amended language of section two point three, two point one, under definitions. Single-use condominiums, so it's going to be treated salt, pepper, et cetera. Four and said similar items, the word war should be replaced by the word man, so that was.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, we've reconsidered, we've authorized reconsideration. I move favorable action on article nineteen as amended. And it's excuse me.
Part of article eighteen, eighteen.
Nineteen six, we're doing both here.
Okay, four nine eight, thank you. On favor, please indicate by saying hi, gentlemen, square.
Hi, Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Thorman.
Hi.
Michael Rubenstein.
Hi.
Chair Bullseye. Next, and we're going to be debating these together, but voting separately. Warner go eight by nineteen, we need reconsidered because there's additional changes by the twenty, maybe that's.
So I think that the advisory committee report didn't have their correct language in there, so you should have an email that I'm hoping I'll pull into the packet that better describes, it's kind of the same issue affecting G. But then there's also retail establishments previously exempt. And then requirements of retail space as well. I'm assuming, did that make it into the project?
Yeah.
So what is the label? Actually, I'm looking at the online agenda.
Let me go there.
There's a under one article nineteen. So there's a five AA, A, I, I, I reconsideration, reconsideration of water, there's a document called Wa nineteen that has emailed from me that includes it in the thread from the petitioners and the advisory committee members, and you'll see the, the language highlighted in red in that attachment.
It's just top one of the list, I see. Red is the new changes?
Yes, and I think that they're revoting it since they weren't sure whether or not that was what they originally voted, but that was their intent.
So they're, they're going to be voting tonight?
They just updated it up, yes.
Okay, they're revoting tonight to delete what's highlighted right now.
No, they're adding it, it's underlined. So I think that the, the black and white underline is the petitioners, and then the red is the AC amendment to the petitioners.
Is this the first document?
Yeah. Yep.
It's just this one section, eight dot thirty-three dot four.
That's what I believe is.
Eight point three, three, yeah. The all three.
Yeah, one hundred and eighty.
So.
Eight point three, three.
It's eight point three, three dot four. Says this bylaw shall take effect on the towns and alliance with previous provisions of GLC forty, section thirty-two, provided that section eight point three, three dot two shall not, and this is what the AC that is applied to a retail establishment previously exempt from section eight point three, three. And then the existing language was until twelve months from section eight, for July first, twenty twenty-seven, whichever verse later. And then advisory added retail established establishments previously exempt from eight point three, three means any retail establishment, one, that is not a retail store, or two, that is a retail store that does not satisfy any of the following requirements. A, for retail space of twenty-five hundred square feet or larger, or at least or at least three locations of the same name within the town of Brookline that will have twenty-five hundred square feet or more, or B, a retail pharmacy with at least two locations under the same ownership, or C, a full-line self-service supermarket, supermarket that had a annual gross sales of a million dollars during previous year in which sells a line of trade, dry grocery, hand goods, or non-food items in some terrible perishable. Why are there just the back to back?
Stock and shop exception.
This is the, it's just option, but it's also offices.
So stock and shop continues to use plastic products?
They were exempt, but it's now just saying that they won't be.
They won't, right.
And plastic, I talked about more. Thanks, you could.
I think it's single-use disposable plastics.
But. Yes. Could somebody tell me what general laws? Chapter forty, section thirty, is a little person.
I guess how bylaws become effective.
Okay, it's the, it's the attorney general.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's right. Chapter forty, section one?
Thirty-two, yeah, that's exactly right. It's the attorney general's review.
Yeah, from the rest there is, I can't find this document.
Chad, is your interpretation that this is to deal with not exempting the law, which is service itself?
Right, so it's, there was, they were previously exempt from section eight, three, three, but this says is but this will not take effect for the places that were previously exempt until twelve months after the attorney general approves it, or July one, or twenty-second, or whichever verse later. So it gives that.
They got, so they had extra time, but they won't, they won't be exempt anymore, or a pharmacy that has, that has two locations.
Right.
And in a size of twenty-five hundred square feet.
That only applies.
But that only applies to.
Yes. So our, our original action was to go favorable action on the original version of this without these. Okay, any other discussion? On favor, reconsideration, people say hi, John Vascoya.
Hi.
Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Thorman.
Hi.
My.
abstain.
And I don't like these, you know, so another vote now, but I lost, so let's vote. I think I would like to have more understanding of why the type of bags that you put roots vegetable in, and not really the fan. It seems to me that identity issues. As well as other issues.
So this isn't just packing.
Well, that's why I'm saying is it's the little plastic bags.
Orange, you said?
Yeah. And if it's already called, it doesn't allow sags like. Hello. Which are, I think they're. I'm just not.
What is the trade joke thing, says it?
Trader Joe's has compostable bags, but some of them are the same use.
Basically, the change of this law says that, right, the, they, it used to be just checkout bags, now it's product bags too. Product bags should comply with the requirements of being either a recyclable paper bag, a reusable product bag, or a compostable plastic bag. So that expands outward, and now, so it's not that you can't offer them, it's that if you offer them, they have to be compostable or reusable. Also, Bernard, your concern, a lot of supermarkets will use sort of brown paper recyclable bags for putting in fruit and vegetables, that's an option in some places.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
So just to understand, is your objection to this specific change, or is it to the?
No, it's not so much an objection, as I think I need more time to really understand you know, how far this goes in terms of disrupting the you know, the, the operations of supermarkets.
When I, when we were on vacation after the election, we, Fabi and I watched a documentary called, I think, Plastic Ocean. And it was really remarkable that the amount of plastic that is getting into our oceans and into our food system that is microplastic, that they're now finding in human bodies, and it's cumulative. And it's, they, they don't know yet, they think it has cardioevacuation, it can impact cardio gasper systems, they're not sure, they're starting to do the research, but plastic is
It's all over, it's in our blood.
It's all over everywhere. And this is something that's happened in the last, you know, thirty years, I mean, plastic has not been fifty years, hasn't been enough in a long time, and it's, it's in everything. So I, it, it is concerning to me that, that that's taking place. And if we can find a way to reduce it, if you do all the, even if it's inconvenient, but, you know, I'm going to put my bra into a plastic bag, I put it into a paper bag, bring my own paper bag.
Okay, so we, we're reconsidering. Any further discussion? I move approval of article nineteen as amended on favor, John Vascoya.
Hi.
Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Thorman.
Hi.
You can, I have a Rubenstein.
Hi.
And Chair Xstains. Okay, that's the last item on this agenda.
We have over ten. So articles fourteen and fifteen, we put back on over the weekend. There was another motion filed by Marcus Penzel, David Pollak, and Dick Banker. That was sent out electronically as a supplement. It's, I believe, supplement number five, and that is a new compromise motion for the board to consider. We also added fifteen in case any action under fourteen caused the board to have a change in part on the position for fifteen, so that's what you have in part for those two articles.
So the, can I ask a question? So, listen, my understanding is that the change that Dick Banker, who was, who was the author of his amendment, there's some language for master and law definitions, I think that they just moved into fourteen that, which would be the pencil article, and it was more just a clarification of, of that language, so it was consistent with master and law, is that, is that your read? And it's still the building commissioner is responsible for overseeing and making the decision, and it can be appealed, you can appeal it to the ZBA, the decision, and there are public hearings.
Yeah, you probably have a better understanding of mine. Sometimes with the zoning ones, I let Polly take the helm, so.
So that, so I did, I received several phone calls about this over the weekend, so so Dick Banker, who's, his major issue with article fourteen was that he wanted the ZBA to have authority and not the building commissioner. He has agreed with the petitioners of article fourteen that the building commissioner can be the person of authority. And the only change is, I don't have it in front of me, it's probably similar, because in order of that, it is that they, they used a definition for master and law that was in Dick's article, and they applied it to article fourteen, and that was accepted by the petitioners.
I should, the, 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 the Pollock, the substitute motion.
Pollock.
Right, yeah, the original petitioners.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Pollock motion.
Right, and the original petition is still being moved, so you will have.
Yeah.
Those, yeah, we need to vote. Well, we can vote.
So there's no real material change to our, the board's original position was, I think, three to two, or three, two, to adopt the pencil motion.
Right.
This, the Pollock, Pollock, Pollock pencil, PPS, I think is what it was called. Dick Pollak has accepted as friendly amendment, Dick Banker's suggestion. So they basically have consolidated the Banker, Pollack, and consolidated to our, John, I'm the third.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
Um, yes. Two things, one is, one is a question. I noticed in the, in the cover memo, and this may have been covered earlier, this question about hearings versus meetings that are held. And I know that the bylaw itself says, for example, the planning board can hold a meeting, but we cannot require the planning board to hold a hearing. My question is, if the planning board of its own volition decides to hold a hearing, does that run afoul of of either fair housing or federal ADA laws? And if it does, then what are the risks and exposures that we have assume in the event that the planning board or the ZBA take that action?
Sure, I can, you know, John Bukary, especially Town Council. So there's not a, I mean, the, the language parents what's in the zoning bylaw, which is what the planning board does when it advises the ZBA, it holds a meeting, and that's what it's called, so there's, there's no requirement in our bylaw. I think the issue, if we made it explicit in this bylaw that a hearing was required, we'd be treating people with disabilities differently.
Right, but that wasn't my question.
Okay, thank you.
So my question was, if if we keep the language as it is, but the planning board of its own volition, or the ZBA of its own volition, chooses to hold a hearing as opposed to a meeting?
Right, and, and so this brings up the question of, you know, hearing versus a meeting, and what is the distinction? And public hearing requires that you do take public comment. So I think if, if on their own volition, they agree to hold or allow public comment, I think is what I'll, how I'll define it. I do think that there potentially are some risks, and that people from the public might get up and say something that's ill-advised, but, but I think I, I think they'll, they'll be able to control the comment, it's defined in the proposed bylaw substitute bylaw, substitutes, substitute that it be confined to kind of these narrow subject matters, which are, you know, the reasonable accommodation standard, as well as it opens it up to this, you know, to allowing them to, to, for neighbors to suggest alternatives that might provide equal access. So I don't, have I, I mean, I'm not quite sure if I, I think there is some, some risk doing it, and I think the practice of the planning board, I know, is to take public comment at all of their, their meetings. So query whether, in fact, it is kind of a hearing, but.
I just, yeah, and so, so because it's the planning board's practice to hold meetings, but then to take public comment, we wouldn't want them to actually have a hearing because they're changing the process specifically for people with disabilities. You're getting to the same point, a meeting with public comment, what's the difference between that is, you know, public hearing? So I think your concern is addressed, but we wouldn't want to change the process. It's, it's the planning board's practice to hold meetings and allow public comment, which is essentially indistinguishable from a meeting.
Right.
All right.
I was just going to add that the way the Pollock pencil amendments is worded, public comment will be restricted to three areas. Now, there is not absolute control, or what someone might say, but in terms of actionable public comments, as I'll call it, it would be restricted to those three particular categories.
Is it three or two?
Three, yeah, there's, it also allows, there are the two, rather fundamentally alters the bylaw, whether it provides an undue administrative or financial burden, and lastly, whether there might be an alternative that would provide equal access, which probably the one that makes me maybe the most nervous, but, but I think you know, I think an avatar who's looking at a big garage next to the house might say, you know, suggest, could they put it over here? And the building commissioner could think about that, and that would be part of the, you could take it back to the the applicant, and there could be, you know, more discussion about whether there are any design options that might make it less burdensome for the.
Any further discussion? Okay, if we go to reconsideration. Okay.
We need to reconsider fourteen first.
Okay, we can, I move reconsideration of article fourteen on favor, people say hi, John.
Yes, hi.
Paul.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
Yes, sure. Let's now vote on the amendments to article fourteen, as we've been discussing. Any further discussion?
We're voting on amendments to the select board substitute motion, is that correct?
Yeah.
On the pencil, Pollock, Banker motion as filed under supplement five.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, on, yeah.
At the end of the last meeting, we determined that this was now referred to as the select board substitute motion, so.
So you have the petitioner motion, then the select board motion would be an amendment to the. So you have the petitioner motion, then the select board motion would be an amendment to the petitioner motion, and then this is another potential amendment.
So are we adopting this amendment as friendly to the select board?
That's, I think, that is the question in front of you right now.
So we want to replace our motion with the pencil.
Paul.
Pollock, Banker.
Motion.
Motion under supplement five.
Yes.
Right.
And that is now the select board motion?
It adopted.
Okay. On favor of replacing the. Um no, whatever we just said. John Bensky.
Hi.
Uh David, um Paul Warren.
Hi.
David Roman.
Hi.
Michael Rubenstein.
Hi.
And Chair of the Senate. Okay, uh reconsideration of article fifteen, um. We had a discussion as to whether it was necessary, but we decided, wait, hold on. I think the conclusion was that. We we had to vote them separately anyway, um.
So we put, we put fifteen. On because we thought if the board was unanimous on fourteen, there may be people who want to flip their votes on fifteen, so that is the opportunity that we have in front of you right now.
Okay.
So I would like to move for reconsideration on article fifteen, so that everyone can have a chance to. See if their minds change, given the consensus that's built over fourteen.
Okay, on favor, John Bensky.
Hi.
Paul Warren.
Hi.
David, David Roman.
Hi.
Um Michael Rubenstein.
Hi.
And Chair of the Senate. Okay, now, let's vote on article fifteen. And explain to me again, what what we're doing here.
And so Bernard.
Yeah.
The the it was a four to one vote, I think, last time, or maybe those those three two? Because a couple of us were not satisfied with article fourteen, voted no action.
Right.
Um on on. So now that we're in agreement, you have a unanimous on fourteen, I'd like to vote, they will action on fifteen, so make the package really.
Okay, so fifteen has not changed.
No, just.
Our motion still is on, under the supplement, supplement number four, starting on page uh one. One, pages one and two of the second.
Okay, so on favor of article um fifteen. Um as originally voted by the select board, please indicate by saying hi, John Bensky.
Hi.
Uh Paul Warren.
Hi.
Uh David Roman.
Hi.
Uh Michael Rubenstein.
Hi.
And Chair of the Senate.
Listen, will we issue another supplemental on that one?
So if tomorrow, I will try and do a brief write-up, but I also always email the moderator to let them know that you've you've changed your votes, what what actually you've done tonight. So they'll, they can either, sometimes if it's short order, they'll announce it from the podium as well.
So Bernard, um before we end the meeting, I would like to ask um. That we reconsider our prior vote on article twenty four, which is the whole rule petition. For a real estate transfer.
Okay.
Uh the the our prior vote on that was, I believe we voted, oh, Michael wasn't here, I think we unanimously supported. Um it was a flag zero vote in support of the whole rule petition. And we amended the whole rule petition to be a fifty fifty split between uh the general fund and the affordable housing investment fund. Um since the uh the time that we took our vote. The A C uh took up this issue, so we voted before the A C. The A C adopted all of our changes. Um and they went a step further, and they converted it to a uh to a resolution. From a whole rule petition. Um and that's um. What I'd like to have us discuss, if we reconsider it, is to uh to follow the advisory committee's. Uh motion and um adopt their uh resolution versus a whole petition. And there's many reasons for that, um I had a long conversation with Tommy Vitolo, Tommy Vitolo gave. Uh public testimony uh during the A C's public hearing on the article. And, you know, he makes a very compelling case as to why uh uh. A resolution would be uh much better than a whole rule petition. I could talk about that if we want, but, you know, we heard, we heard Tommy explain it.
And I agree with him. Yeah, any, Michael.
Oh, two questions, everyone. So this wasn't on the agenda, Chris, is that true?
No, but it's it's covered, we, our agenda allows for any.
Around this question, okay. Um was. Was the A C's modification to a resolution accepted by the petitioners? Or are the petitioners filing a whole rule petition and this is being offered as an alternative on the floor?
So the 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 select board's uh motion was for a whole rule petition. Um and I don't know if the petitioners would still, they may, the petitioners may still want to move. Uh a whole rule petition. Um as opposed to a resolution. What I'm asking is the select board to join with advisory committee. And make our motion aligned with the advisory committee to ensure that this thing passes as a as a resolution as opposed to a whole petition.
So this is, I presume this is not coming up in town meeting either tonight or tomorrow night?
Uh that's good, probably definitely not tonight.
Right. Um.
And the the schedule could be changed around and it could.
Sure. Someone can move it tonight, they they what's your, what's your?
My my can, my concern is that I'm not sure. How I would want to vote without understanding sort of what the petitioners are doing versus what the advisory committee. I mean, I would like, I would like to hear from both of those sides before casting a vote.
So how would we find out the petition position?
We can just ask the petitioner, I think the petitioner was planning on supporting. The select board's motion, but now that you are potentially moving from that. We we would need to ask them whether or not they want.
I think the petitioner probably prefers a whole rule petition, but I don't know.
Yeah, so what I suggested, that we take this up tomorrow.
Okay.
We do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay.
And now we have to come. Um but, you know, in the meantime, we should find out uh what the petition position is, so that we.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll reach out to Alex.
Okay. Okay, um anything else? No, let's end the meeting. And go to town meeting.